Good evening and welcome. Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, November sixth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance? Our commission meetings from ten thirty twenty-three were received. Do we have any corrections? Addition? And it was staying as submitted. Consent agenda, one motion. Consider buy-sell agreement for purchase of land as described as parcel A two of COS three zero eight eight two four one in Lewis and Clark County for the purpose of drilling well wells to perfect City of Helena's groundwater reservation. Who's discussing this? I didn't see his name here. Director Leland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. This is a consent agenda item to enter into a buy-sell agreement with Burnham, Gary Burnham, to purchase roughly a little over four acres of property across from the Missouri River Treatment Plant. It is a great location to be able to drill wells to try and perfect our water rights. It is in close proximity. We already have three well-producing wells right next to the water treatment plant, and we'll be able just to bore under the highway, so it will save a lot of money in the long run because of the proximity of it, and then there is no development around the water treatment plant. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Mayor, one other thing is we did budget five hundred thousand dollars to purchase this property. It was the one that was brought forward during the budget process, and so we are well under it at three hundred and five thousand.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just really briefly, does the delta between what we budgeted and what we're actually going to pay for it, does that remain in Public Works, or does that go back into the general fund?
Mayor, Commissioner, it is enterprise fund, so it does stay in water, and our proposal is to actually take that excess and put it into the well project because we have a lot more expenses to be able to develop everything. We're just budgeting it as an incremental phased program, so we are just planning to take that and use it for more of the well programs, basically drill the wells on the property.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Do you have any public comments on this matter? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move the approval of the consent agenda, consent, consent agenda item A.
Second.
As we move and second it, any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Commissioners' proposals, communications, any? Reporter of the City Attorney.
Mayor Commissioner, sorry, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Report of the City Manager.
Mayor, I have nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Communications from Helena's Business Council, Representative Perry, you have the floor.
Can you hear me now, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. This is Nancy Perry from H C C District Two. Our last H C C meeting was October twenty-fifth, and we had two visitors from the city. The first one was Mr. Craig Marr from the Parks Department who spoke to us about care and maintenance of the city parks. He listed all the parks and discussed, discussed what his department does to maintain them, which was a great long list. He also answered our questions about spraying insecticides and herbicides on the park grass. All of the members of H C C had received an email from a Helena resident who described her concern with spraying poison on the grass at Centennial Park, particularly at the dog park. She was concerned about dogs possibly eating the grass after it had been sprayed, and little kids playing on the newly sprayed grass. And Mr. Marr agreed with H C C members who said that the public needs to be notified anytime the grass has been sprayed. He mentioned that it's hard to get adequate signage up on sprayed grass to tell children and dogs to stay off of the grass. He promised to relay our concerns to others at the Park Department, and they would try to solve the problem of the signage. We were also visited by Mr. Michael Alvarez from the City Planning Department, who talked to us about the city's new sign code. We had first learned about the new sign code on Be Heard Helena. Mr. Alvarez said that the sign code hasn't been updated for twenty-three years, and the old code needs to be updated to address new sign technology, which he referred to as electronic messages. I'd never heard of that. Anyway, we really appreciated both Mr. Marr and Mr. Alvarez taking the time to talk to us. And unless there are any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Representative Perry. Any comments or questions for Representative Perry? Thanks. Regular items. Consider a request for enlargement of sanity, sanitary sewer service boundary for property located at two one six seven Head Lane. Legally described as Lot Five of the Country Club Park subdivision, Lewis and Clark County. Director Leland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Can you see it?
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Sorry for the delay. Uh, this is another enlargement of the water and sewer service boundary. To give a little bit of history, is Fort Harrison and the V A, which is located right here. And then you can see Green Meadow Country Club here. Spring Meadow is located over here, so this is outside city limits. And then this is Head Lane. This is Odd Fellows located here. And in ninety-seven, the fort had lagoons that were here that were failing in this location. So they did a study, and the best alternative was to run a uh, gravity sewer main from the fort all the way to city limits and put a lift station located at Horseshoe Bend to go to the city limits. So with that, that main out there, we have had several requests to be able to connect to it. Uh, these are the properties that the commission have, has approved to be connected to it. There's been some that have been approved through the years, some that have been denied through the years. Uh, so with this, this is the new property at twenty-one sixty-seven Head Lane that they would like to connect to it, and with that, they'd have to waive right, waiver of right to protest S I Ds, waiver of road improvements, a whole bunch of other improvements with it, and they can only do single-family residents without coming to us, so it gives us some control of what is being done out in that location and what can actually be built. Uh, so with that, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Director Leland. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor. Um, so I, I think you just answered my first one, and then I do have a second one. This is a totally new single-family residence. It's being proposed.
Mayor Commission, yes, it is. It's currently a field right now being haved.
Okay, and then, um, I, I believe this is accurate, but this is not within the urban standards boundary, correct?
Mayor Commissioner, no, it is not, um, but we do have that main out there, and there's several others that have been connected.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Leland, if you can use the mouse to just show where are existing city limits in relation to the proposed property?
Mayor Commissioner, uh, it is the, it's basically, um, down here at, um, the fairgrounds around, and then comes up into Country Club Avenue, and then, um, out Green Meadow a ways, because this is in city limits here. Then we have R Redeemer's Church that is located right there, so that is city limits at this time.
Okay, um, and just a follow-up. So as far as sort of anticipating annexation down the road, is this short-term, medium-term, nowhere on the radar, um, referencing the urban standards boundary? What is our sort of forward-looking view of this location?
Mayor Commissioner, at this time, it is a very long ways out there. One of our biggest concerns is with emergency services, having the railroad crossing on Head Lane, and just how we can serve that area, and working with the Planning Department, it is a very long, long-term range to annex out at that location.
Any other comments from the commission? Do you have any public comments on this matter? Madam Clerk, do you have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
I'm sorry, I was gonna, could I ask one more question of Director Leland?
Go ahead.
Um, so I want, can you maybe talk? Sorry. Um, can you maybe talk a little bit about why this is not a suitable development for them to have their own septic? I think that that this area is kind of a and we've had, since I've been on the commission, we've only had one other request. Um, it's an interesting conundrum almost because it's not necessarily reasons it's not in the urban standards boundary, from what I understand, is because it's not necessarily suitable for single-family home development or, or greater density. So I guess can you talk about some of the engineering of why the septic is not an option for them?
Mr. Commissioner, it is because of the high groundwater. There's very high groundwater in this area. Some of it would have to be very advanced treatment, which is very expensive or may not be allowed at all. It depends on where in this location um, that it, the property is located, but it is such high groundwater, that's why um, the well and septic, or the septic system is, well, we're looking at is, is not permitted, and that's why they are asking to connect. One other reason for the, um, for not being in the growth area is the agreement too with Fort Harrison to try not to have very dense area in these locations because of the the operations that they have out there. So that's a, an agreement that we have, so that's why it isn't included either.
Thanks.
Please.
Director Leland, I know that you mentioned S I Ds and the waiver of right to protest. That also includes annexation, correct?
Mayor, City Manager, yes, it does. It includes all that, so we can annex it whenever we would, we feel that it is best interest of the city.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve the enlargement of the existing sanitary sewer, sewer service boundary to include the Ramirez property located at twenty-one sixty-seven Head Lane Road and enter into a development agreement with the City of Helena with the following conditions. One, waiver of the right to protest annexation into the City of Helena. Two, waiver of the right to protest future special improvement districts for water, streets, and sidewalks. Three, obtain all applicable cer, city permits and pay all applicable fees. Four, accept city metering on the sanitary sewer service or billing and the associated costs. Five, purchase sewer capacity for the proposed residence in the Stone Meadows Pump Station at forty-two cents per G P D or two hundred and sixty-eight G P D at a cost of one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-six cents. Six, restrict the use of four, one single-family residence only, and seven participate in the construction and extension of the city water system at such time as the water system would benefit the owner's property.
Let you visit a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
No.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
No.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion fails three to two.
Consider a variance request to not extend sewer through the frontage of the property on Washington Street for the King Commons Development. Director Leland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner. Just give me a second. All right, thank you, Mayor Commission. This was the tabled item that we had some miscommunication with the recommendation from staff and what was with the commission. That was my fault. Um, there was miscommunication with the admin assistant. We wanted to change what it was saying on the agenda, and then the recommendation was supposed to be approved, table or deny, and when I suggested the change, I said, just put the approve down here. I meant approve, table, or deny, and approval is all that came out. So that is my fault. It was miscommunication. Uh, did not stay on top of that, um, since it was already approved. So I apologize with that, so I'll go forward. Uh, the request is, is for a variance not to extend, uh, sewer main in Washington Street. Uh, this is for King's Common, and seem to get the, oh, there it is. King's Common is located here in the blue. This is the roundabout. This is the wastewater treatment plant. This is town pump, and this is one lot that was annexed into the city, I believe, about a year and a half ago. Uh, they are currently under construction for the water and sewer and roads, and everything that is needed for annexation on this portion of the property that is just south of the irrigation canal. And then there's going to be a second phase on their part as far as construction that is located north of the irrigation canal. One of the requirements is to extend sewer down to a lift station that will be located approximately in this location to be extended up. They have designed the property and have chosen to extend the sewer down this location through the middle of the property, so they are not in need for the development to have that sewer location as it, as it currently is. However, by city code, it is to extend water and sewer across the frontage of the property, uh, so that adjacent property owners can be able to connect to it, so you have a, um, a fairness in the, in how the system is systematically extended. The adjacent property owner is us. It's a stormwater pond that is located out there. So with this variance, who actually would be impacted is, yes, the developer can extend this main and then propose a rebate or reimbursement or latecomers fee, however you want to phrase it. So if the city ever does sell this or decide to develop it on our own, we would have to pay a latecomers fee or whoever the developer is if that property no longer is in city hands. Um, so that is just where we are located in this one, is the developer has said they do not need that, and their current design shows that they have sewer through their property and can get to that lift station. Um, so that's why it's approved, table or deny. City code has you extend the water, the sewer, but we are the adjacent property owners, and, um, I don't know if we have, as Public Works, we do not have any proposal to be able to put any development out there or buildings, um, but it is a city-owned property, so I'd be happy to answer it at this time.
Thank you, Director Leland. Comments or questions from the commission? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so Director Leland, what is your recommendation on this one?
Mayor Commissioner, it is actually approved, table, or deny, uh, because it is in your hands is if it will be developed. If we have an idea as a commission or as a city that we may put something out there, then mine would be denial because we need that to go in prior to the road going out there. But I don't have any master plan or any plans to be able to develop it at this time, so it by city code, it says, do this. Um, so, so we've been informed by previous city attorneys that we can't say approve. We have to stick by what the city, city code says. Um, so that is why it is approved, table, or deny, and I, I truly, um, my opinion is I could go either way. It's just, do we have development proposed?
Any other comments from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I'm my question is, I mean, does this cause issues later on down the line if there's future development north of this? Because we know that everyone, I mean, immediately into the county, um, that is where they're starting to adopt, you know, zoning that reflects the cities, and we've had lots of requests for folks to start being annexed and et cetera. We have, I mean, I foresee that will probably happen more and more, um, given the density that's occurring there. So I mean, are we by, by approving this variance, do we hamstring future development because it's not ready to go, or does that have an impact?
Mayor Commissioner, no, it does not. This is a dead-end, dead-end sewer main. Just because it goes to a lift station, that is the only place that it gravities to, so nothing else. There's no way to really extend this main to have any benefit. So if anything north of this location on other city property does get developed, they either have to gravity back towards the city, or they're going to have to move the lift station, and that does have zero effect on this, so it isn't, is one, is, that's why I'm could not have a true, you know, a very strong recommendation because it is a dead-end main. It is only going to serve our property, and that is it.
Thanks.
Any other comments from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, um. I guess for Mr. Leland, and perhaps if there's public comment, I would have the question for, um, representative of the developer. Do they need this? Main.
Mayor Commissioner, to serve their property as it currently is designed, we do not have a building, um, plan in for the north section of this is no, and their development, and that is part of their, um, variances, they will use the sewer mains that are already going to be installed or installed across the property that is serving this portion of the, of the development.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up for, maybe for us, I guess, is if this is not required for their development, the code, uh, city code six dash three dash four, uh, the following criteria apply to wastewater main extensions, lift stations, force mains, and interceptor mains, and providing for a rebate of reimbursable cost. A, where wastewater main extensions are required to serve facility structures or subdivisions, installation must conform to the following requirements, and so on. So if this is not required for them for this subdivision, then why would we ask for them to put it in? So that's just for us to consider, and that's kind of where I'm at, and I'd be interested in, uh, and I guess I might further say is if if the land is developed in the future by others, whether that's us or others, wouldn't it make more sense for that main to be put in by that developer that's rolling that project out? So that's kind of where I'm at, and I would be interested if uh, having a question for public comment, should it arise? Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioner. Uh, again, my name is Jeff Larson. I'm representing, uh, King Commons, Helena King Commons LLC. And they're the developer of this, of the King's Commons project. Um, first of all, I just want to say, I mean, we, we definitely recognize the need for this regulation or this requirement. I mean, when you're developing things and developments or hopscotching, you know, we do want to provide, uh, you know, the services needed to move into the next property, but you know, there are situations where that really doesn't fit, and I think that is this is one of those types of situations, in my opinion, and that's why we have variances, and so we can discuss it and and hopefully come to a resolution on it. Uh, so to talk a little bit more specifically about it, as, uh, Mr. Leland said, let's see, did I lose my? Well, anyway, the, there it is. There we go. So within the development, I mean, we've got everything designed. All the buildings are connected. There is no problem uh, serving any building that's, that's in the development. So really, the, the place we're talking about is your regional stormwater pond, and then also this property, just to clarify, this is a Northwest Energy Substation, so it's, uh, you know, it's not going to be redeveloped or changed anytime for a very, very long time. But to talk about your property a little bit more, uh, in a little more detail, this, you know, it's, this is a big, big pond, and a lot of earth has been moved, and it's, it's actually, there's, this is a a fairly significant slope off the, the edge of the road there. So to develop that, this, the first thing you'd have to do is bring in a tremendous amount of fill. And then generally, though, the, the property, even before it was excavated for the ponds, it, it, uh, it sloped to the northwest, so it sloped out into this corner. And really, if you're going to serve this whole property and develop it, the place you'd want to serve it from is down here, and you, we would need a left station or something to to serve the vast majority of it. You could maybe serve one row of houses along this edge, and that would be the, in my opinion, about the best you could do without, I mean, really significant amounts of fill. So, um, you know, putting this main in, it, it, it's not going to serve anything, the you know, it's, it's four manholes, almost a thousand feet of pipe. It's probably sixty to seventy thousand dollars of investment that I don't think we will ever see used, and, uh, uh, you know, the only comment that had maybe a bit of validity to it, uh, last week, Jamie talked, or, uh, Mr. Clark talked about a shop building, and there is a, maybe a potential site right there for a shop building. It's tight. I don't know if it would work. But to put in that, that amount of infrastructure, uh, to serve one building, I mean, I, I think the intent of the, the regulation is we're looking at development, and, uh, one building, I mean, I I think the intent of the the regulation is we're looking at development and you know, and something that we're fairly sure is going to happen. And to, you know, to to provide this amount of or spend this amount of money for maybe one potential little building site and you know, I I just don't think it's a it's a wise decision. And and I would make the point too, that if if this anybody was ever serious about this, the the more less expensive way to serve it is to tie it into a main that's closer up up in this area here. So so I I hope that helps clarify our position. We we just don't, you know, if we build that main, it is not going to be used for a very, very long time and probably never, in my opinion. I'm available for any questions if if anybody has any.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions from the commission?
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question. So knowing that the code requires the main to be built in that location, can you explain a bit about how, why you chose not to do it that way?
Yes, to save money. I mean, we had we have mains that were required internal to the development. The development is fairly large, long buildings. And to extend to just serve and, you know, one more building. You know, it it just works out. It's probably half, half or a third of the money that it would be to extend it along Washington Street. So that's that's why we did it that way.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any other public comments? Adam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Please go ahead.
I would move to approve the variance request for extending sewer through the frontage of the property on Washington Street for the King's Common Development.
I second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Adam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean. Aye. Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider approval of the reconstruction replacement of three sets of double exterior door and restored approximately one hundred windows for property subject to scenic facade easement located on one zero four East Broadway. Heritage Preservation Officer Tardo, you have the floor.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm just going to see if I can find my PowerPoint here. Well, I can begin by telling you a few things about it before you see the photographs. So this is regarding a facade easement on one oh four East Broadway. There are approximately nineteen facade easements in the city of Helena that were put on during urban renewal. This one in particular on one oh four East Broadway, which is the former Masonic Temple. This was put on in nineteen seventy eight and they follow with, they they follow with the property. They're they're recorded with the deed records in perpetuity. And so what this facade easement requires of the Heritage Tourism Council, as well as the commission, is to look at whatever improvements somebody is going to make to the owners, the makes are going to make to the facade of the building. The facade includes everything, the front, all four sides and the roof. And so what the owners of this building are proposing to do is they're going to replace some double doors. These are the exterior double doors. Some are to apartments and some are to commercial units located in the on in the building. So because these facade easements were put on using HUD funds, that means what that means that the Secretary of the Interior Standards apply because these buildings are listed, this building is listed on the National Register. It's a contributing property to the to Helena Historic District. And so that's that is just a quick a quick rundown of what this, what this building is. So what we're asking is the the owner, the owners proposed to replace repair doors, redouble sets of doors and approximately a hundred windows. These windows are about nine feet. They're over nine feet tall. And the Heritage Tourism Council reviewed this at their October seventeenth, twenty twenty three meeting. And they recommended that the repairs be be approved because they're appropriate and they for the for the building and they are consistent with the Secretary of Interior's standards for historic preservation. Any luck? No. No worries. Okay. So I'm sorry, I can't show you the photographs today. Technical difficulties, as you noted in the beginning. Does anybody have any questions regarding?
Thank you, Officer Tardo. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, just one question. I'm excited that they are planning to make these upgrades. Do you know what the timeline is for completion?
I don't. I don't. I do know that they are intending to apply for TIF, TIF funds.
Thanks.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, Officer Tardo. In terms of the HUD funds that you got, the Housing and Urban Development Fund, how much did you get for that?
You know, that was in nineteen seventy eight. So I'm not sure how much they got.
Right, right. Just about a year before I was born too. But where were the funds to? Is the owner of the building funding this? And then you're looking at TIF funds, you said?
Yeah, I believe they applied for the, I don't know if when when the grant cycle is. I know they were doing some work on it. It came by me and I reviewed it and sent it back, but I didn't know exactly when it was due. So I know that they're applying for funds for that and they will probably as well be using some of their own funds. Yeah.
And answers my question. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, this, I don't know if this is going to be helpful at all, but and I'm not sure how much BID has expended, but there is also the facade grant. If they don't know about that through BID.
Yep, yep. And I will let them know. I don't think that cycle has opened up yet. Right?
I don't know that, but I'm sure someone could let us know.
Yeah.
Are there any public comments? Any online, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, there are no public comments online.
This time I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve the reconstruction replacement of three sets of double exterior doors and restore approximately a hundred windows for the property subject to a scenic facade easement located at one oh four East Broadway.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean. Aye. Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do apologize. I do believe we have one other item on the agenda this evening under public hearings.
According to my agenda here. Public hearing. Consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow a resident multiple dwelling units. Three or more units in an R two residential zoning district in the city of Helena, Montana. This project is located at two two one one Hauser Boulevard. Planner Alvarez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. As introduced, I am Michael Alvarez. I am planner with the Community Development Department. And this item is a conditional use permit for property located at twenty two eleven Hauser Boulevard. Specifically, this is consideration of a resolution for a conditional use permit as required by section eleven two three of city code to allow residents multiple dwelling unit in the R two residential zoning district for property legally described as lot seventeen and eighteen and block three oh three of Brook Edition to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. This property is located on the south side of Hauser Boulevard, mid block between Hiawatha Street and Silverette Street. This would be on the southeast corner of the platted Elizabeth Street that isn't developed, that runs through there. The land is presently vacant. The previous structure was demolished by the applicant. The land use was not determined for that property, although it was commercial. So the applicant property owner is looking to obtain a conditional use permit to allow multiple dwelling unit residents in the R two residential zoning district. Specifically, they're looking to build four townhome style units. And in order to do so, they need the CUP. So a multiple dwelling units residence is a building containing three or more dwelling units for occupancy by three or more groups living separately from each other. In the R two residential district, the intent of that district is to provide for the development of a mixture of residential structures to serve varied housing needs and allow and it does allow for limited compatible nonresidential uses. Won't read the entire definition of the growth policy area designation for the urban category, which this is in. But this category does include predominantly moderate to high density residential uses. So the site plan here and in your packets, there you might have seen two different site plans. The ones that are accurately reflect what they intend to build are the ones marked for review. Transportation Systems didn't want them to have four separate driveways coming off onto Hauser. So they've mirrored the two townhomes to share a driveway access so that they just have two driveways off onto Hauser. That's the one of the primary concerns from that the city gave back to them as notes. Here is some elevations to give you an idea of scaling as it may fit in the neighborhood over there. Where the subject property would be located on the original plot. So in considering a conditional use permit, section A eleven three four A are the standards that need to be met. Section eleven three four B are the factors used to determine whether the standards in section A are met. And section C informs us that any adverse impact on the standards of section A may be used to justify the denial of a permit or the placement of conditions on that permit. Findings from the city, and I apologize, a couple of these findings are actually slightly out of dates. It was the intention of me to line this up for when you heard the transportation systems bring forward the curb and gutter, which I believe you heard last month. But a miscommunication means you're now hearing them at separate times. So I apologize for that. But the surrounding neighborhood is generally built out as single dwelling unit residential with some exceptions. The change in use from the previous commercial structure to townhomes aligns with the intent of the R two zoning district. The proposal will meet the district dimensional standards and not require variance. And then you have already heard and decided on the sidewalk curb and gutter concerns last month for this property. Which I believe you all voted to approve. This was legally noticed in the Helena IR. Neighbor notices were mailed to adjacent property owners and a sign was placed on the premises. And as of today, no public comment was received for the proposal. On August eighth, zoning commission recommended approval of a resolution granting a conditional use permit as required by section eleven two three of city code to allow residents multiple dwelling units in the R two residential zoning district for property legally described as lot seventeen and eighteen and block three oh three of the Brook Edition. The property being located at twenty two eleven Hauser Boulevard with the following conditions. One, a building permit must be submitted for within one year. And two, all conditions must be met within one year of CUP approval as per section eleven three nine of Helena City Code. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna Alvarez. Comments or questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious, do we know if these are going to be rentals or owner occupied?
I do not know, but there is a, the, thank you, Mayor and Commission, but we do have a representative, the architect, if you'd like to ask them.
I will wait for public comment and look forward to the answer.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor, fellow commissioners, my name is Jacob Augustin. I work with Slate Architecture. And I am the representative for Ray Coons, who is the developer of this property. He is planning to sell these properties. You know, once they're sold, you know, whether they're rentals or what they do with them, he can't control, but these will be sold from him. So they're not going to be rentals that we know of. But we're really excited to to move forward on this and high density for these types of projects is needed and, you know, urban sprawl is horrible and we don't like it. And this, we do feel like this is a great opportunity for the city. So thank you for for having me.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Adam Clerk, do you have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow residents multiple dwelling units, three or more units in an R two residential zoning district in the city of Helena, Montana, with the conditions that, A, or number one, a building permit must be submitted within one year. Number two, all conditions must be met within one year of the CUP approval as per section eleven three nine of Helena City Code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean. Aye. Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Any final from the commission? This meeting is adjourned.